Hey, good evening. Welcome to the Thursday, April 10th, 2025 South Haven Planning Commission meeting. Calling the meeting in order at 7:00 PM. Next up, we'll have a roll call.
Michael Campbell. Clark Gruber.
Here.
Larry Heineig. Mary Hasley. Amy Nichols.
Here.
Eddie Polk.
Here.
Bob Sherman.
Here.
Janice Barney.
Here.
Tim Stegman.
Here.
I'd make a motion to excuse the members who aren't here this evening.
Support.
Mike, Mike, Mary, and Larry.
Support.
Okay, so we've moved and supported any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 All oppose. Next, we'll have the approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I support.
It's been moved and supported. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose. Agenda is approved. Next up, meeting minutes, March 6th, regular and special meetings.
I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on March 6th and the special meeting of March 6th as well.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any other discussion or edits? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose. Minutes are approved. Next up, public comment. Citizens in the audience may address the Planning Commission regarding items on the agenda for which there is no scheduled public hearing. First, we're going to start with Planning Commission, the Planning Commission Communication Log. It's rather lengthy, so I asked Clark to read it for me tonight.
Okay, and I ask that if you are in attendance tonight, and I mispronounce your last name, one, I apologize. Two, if the Holy Ghost takes hold of you and you want to scream out the proper enunciation of your last name, I'm okay with that. Okay. Christine Norland, email regarding request for Harborside Condominiums to SDR Overlay District. Mary Ann Maz, email request on behalf of Harborside HOA to add Harborside Condominiums to the STR overlay. And Mary Ann Maz also request of homeowner to add Harborside Condominium to the overlay district. Samantha Jankey also requests to add the overlay. And Joe Wilkins, concern about a mixed use, future land use map designation in Ward 1. Elaine Herbert sent two messages, emails regarding 241 Oak Street Public Notice and one on the 241 Oak Street Map Amendment. Keith Kowinski and Mary Ann Heidelberg, I apologize, concerned about 241 Oak rezoning. Jim and Rachel Sankowski regarding the master plan and efforts made to support Bundy's. Rosalie Placati, concern about the 241 Oak rezoning. Lisa Coupillard sent three emails, one concerning the mixed use, future land use map designation in Ward 1, the response to Chairman's closing comments during the March 6th meeting, and one on non-permanent signs. Dan Agnello sent an email regarding the agreement with Lisa Coupillard's email about non-permanent signs. Sandra Simons in opposition to the 241 Oak Street rezoning. Helen Thiessen as opposition to the rezoning of the Bundy's Bakery. Catherine Shunder, support of the 241 Oak Street rezoning. The Carolow Family, concern about the 241 Oak Street rezoning. Jansa Jackson, concerns about STR rezoning text amendments. And the SHVRA Board and Property Rights Coalition, concerns about STR rezoning text amendments. Heather Orstreich, opposition to 241 Oak Street. Tom Schurbsma, opposition to 241 Oak Street rezoning. Henry and Regina Allen, in support of 241 Oak Street rezoning. Chris Colenda, support of 241 Oak Street rezoning. Michelle Theum, in support of 241 Oak Street rezoning. Lorna Weidels, in support of 241 Oak Street rezoning. Mark Pratt and Singrid Han in opposition to 241 Oak Street rezoning. Chris Pizzani, opposition to 241 Oak Street rezoning. And Norbert Diaz, opposition to 241 Oak Street rezoning. That's the entire list, I hope.
Okay, thank you, Clark. Were there any we missed? I hope not. Okay. We're still at public comment for items on the agenda for which there's no scheduled public hearing, which would mean item 7 and item 9, master plan update and temporary sign zoning text amendments. Anybody wish to speak to that? If so, please come up to the podium, state your name, you'll have five minutes.
John Laurstorf of 23 Delaware. I want to address the sign ordinance that you're working on. When a person wants to sell their house, they put up a real estate sign. It's up temporarily. When the house is sold, the sign comes down. All around our neighborhoods now, we're seeing the beach walk signs for STRs. They're nice looking signs, but they're not temporary. They're up all year round. And I would suggest that maybe you can create a category in your ordinance, which you're looking at, for short-term rental, commercial signs in residential areas. Allow them to be put up Memorial Day weekend through Labor Day. And then they get taken down because they're temporary, so that people don't have to look at them all year round. We do that with real estate signs, and I think you can create that category. But having to sign up all year round is not a temporary sign. So I'd like to see that addressed so that our neighborhoods will go back to the character that they are, which are residential. We don't put commercial signs in residential. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to, yeah? Is there anybody that wishes to speak after this lady? Oh, okay. Last one.
Lisa Coupillard, 561 Indiana. You have received my communication. I totally support what Mr. Laurstorf said. The allegedly temporary beach walk signs, just like a real estate sign, once those real estate signs come out of the ground, there is a hole that has to be filled. And I think that's been the issue, that they wiggle in the ground, and yet, if they are pulled out of the ground, they, there's a hole that needs to be filled. That's where I think this is not a temporary sign. As I proposed in my communication to you, along with what Mr. Laurstorf said, Memorial Day to Labor Day, that if those signs are so, they are nice signs, and I'm sure they cost, you know, decent amount of money. And so if they are of value, they could be pulled out, set up behind the house, or next, set up against a house behind the shrubs or whatever, or stuck in a garage until the next season, or the rental company could come around and pick them up like other, like they do with the extra bins during the summer with Bestway. This is just unacceptable, especially in our ward. I mean, I think it's as bad in Ward 3. There's an awful lot of those signs, beach walk signs, in Ward 3 as well. So I'm really hoping that after all that clamoring that's been done by the residents, that we will get some resolution that will meet our satisfaction. Thank you.
Okay, going once, twice, three times? All right, item 5, short-term rental zoning text amendments.
Thank you. In the packet this evening, you all have revised short-term rental zoning text amendments. In fact, there are three versions of texts that were prepared as a result of the conversations that we had at last month's meeting. I know that the red line versions didn't quite make it into the packet as we intended, so we did send those separately this afternoon, and I've given each of you a printed copy for use. We can pull those up on the screen if we need to. So just let me know what works best as we move through the meeting tonight. Version A includes the changes that were specifically requested by the Planning Commission last month, and that were recommended by Williamson Works and agreed to by the city's attorney's office. And we've got the city attorney, David Everly, with us again tonight, as well as city manager Kate Hosier. So thanks to both of you for being here. The version B text is a version that was prepared as a courtesy in an attempt to incorporate changes that were requested at the meeting by Councilmember Hasley, in addition to the changes that the Planning Commission requested. And then version C is yet another revised version. It was really another attempt to clarify the versions, the revisions requested by Councilmember Hasley after staff had an opportunity to communicate with her about the B version. So tonight, we do need to hold a public hearing. We did notice versions A and B for the public hearing, and then have some discussion on the text and whether or not you all are ready to move a version of text forward to the city council.
Okay. Does the commission have any questions for staff prior to opening the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose. Public hearing is open. How many plan on speaking tonight on this item publicly?
Looks like one.
Just one? Okay. State your name, address, you have five minutes.
Oh, I was gonna say, I probably had 20. John Laurstorf of 23 Delaware. In looking at the packet, I'm referring to the one that starts on page 151, which is the red line district. I don't think C has all the changes in that. Do they? I don't think they do. But anyway, I support the red line one in there with these changes. One of the things I noticed in there is that there's a definition regarding the lawful non-conforming use, which is fine. But then when we go over to the zoning compliance determination, it says the zoning administrator will specify whether the lot use and structure complies with current requirements. And I think that might produce some confusion. You might want to just say zoning requirements, because in your definition, there are people that would be, if they met the requirements in 2016 or 18, they would be able to continue with that, whereas your current, the proposed current, might not have those in there. So I think that's something you might want to address, so that it, both of them fit together. So anyway, I support the red line version, which starts on page 151. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sure. There's a lot of people out there for one comment. All right. Entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I move we close the public hearing.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, staff asked us to look at version A, version B, hold the public hearing, which has been done. I can discuss and make a recommendation.
Well, when I look at version A, that was discussed by the full Planning Commission, and included additional recommendations from Williamson Work, and also additional information and verbiage from both staff and the city attorney's office. So I think when it comes to something that probably encompasses input from everyone, I think version A would be the better text to move forward with. And I know we have a version B with our council rep input, and then C trying to further encompass what our representative wants. I feel like if we gave A to council, then our rep could work with council to see if those were changes that they wanted to see for us to consider. But I think version A is probably the cleanest version to give back. I know this isn't the original version, which we gave them, but it is something we have discussed and could help move forward the completion of the short-term rental package.
Okay. Anyone else?
Well, I agree with Clark. Version A is probably the best version. I go back to the fact that we're going to send something to council, and they're going to do exactly what they want to do with it. They will not listen to any of our recommendations. They will not take any of our input. So I'm kind of at a quandary as to why we're going to send something back to them, and they're going to do what they want to do with it.
Anyone else? Anyone ready to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, if the group is ready for action, I will also say that later in the day, we sent out a proposed resolution in an effort to ensure that we've got a clear record of what is sent to the city council. And so that was distributed via email and paper copy for your consideration tonight as well. And that resolution does contemplate the A version of text. It can certainly be modified, amended if you're not comfortable with the language. But if action is being considered, then staff would recommend moving forward to adopt, making a motion to adopt this resolution to recommend that the ordinance move forward to city council, the A version.
Do you know approximately what time that email was sent?
Hmm, I could look. I don't know off the top of my head. It's this two pager, yeah.
This is what's in front of it is the...
So we got A and B, and then that's the resolution.
If you want to do it by resolution, doesn't have to be. This is where we need the elevator music.
Yeah. At this point, we've been, we've been doing motions. I understand the potential change.
I apologize, the resolution was not sent via email. The red line text was sent via email. The resolution is just provided in hard copy here.
I would think doing that by resolution would be something we would need to learn, understand, and figure out if that's the way we want to take on. We typically have done, done by motion.
Right, but you can go, like item 3, if you want to go through A through J, you can do that. I don't know, whatever you guys want to do. Or make a motion excluding this resolution, whatever you want.
Well, the thing with the...
You need to keep going.
That is true, but with the resolution, we've got something pretty large. I want to make sure the public is aware of that as well.
Can you put the resolution up?
I can. Looks like I lost my connection.
Just for the record, Kelly's emails with the version A, version B attachments were sent at 12:01 this afternoon, according to my email. That, as Kelly said, did not include the...
Doesn't have the resolution. That's what I was looking for.
Yeah. By paper copy.
Is that big enough? Larger yet?
I'm sorry, I can't see this one behind me. I have to look across the...
Trying to keep it all on the screen still.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask a question?
Yes.
What's the difference between putting it in a resolution and putting it in a motion? Like, is there, I mean, you know, I've been...
I have my version, but since the city attorney's here on the clock, he can answer.
Thank you.
The recitals are largely just a way to document what has been done. The key to zoning is paper the file, paper the file, paper the file. So that's what the purpose those serve. The, on page 2, paragraph 3, and then it goes into, so it goes, it's 3A through J. Those are factors set forth in the zoning ordinance that the Planning Commission is supposed to consider when either adopting a text amendment or a map amendment. Now, I put them all together because this ordinance has both the text and a map amendment. And this is the result of kind of a last minute realization from staff that historically, when an ordinance was worked on by the Planning Commission, those were all the things you all addressed throughout the course of your deliberations. But we understood that this one, as has been said, was submitted by the city council for an expeditious review, and we wanted to make sure that the Planning Commission had an opportunity to, more or less in one fell swoop, make sure that we were checking all the boxes and articulating a finding as to each of those issues.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So then we would have to give this resolution resolution number?
Yes, I think if the, if the Planning Commission is inclined to adopt this resolution, I'd ask that it be assigned a resolution number, and then a planning commissioner could simply make a motion to adopt resolution, whatever the number may be. If there's a second, you could take a roll call vote, and you'd be done.
We haven't had any resolutions this year, correct?
I think the previous two were at the end of 2024.
Yes. So this would be Resolution 1.
Or maybe 2025-1, to avoid confusion with other resolutions in other years.
Yeah.
And would I need to read this entire resolution to get this into record?
No.
No.
You would not.
All right.
You need to reference it, unless there's changes to it.
And does this particular resolution allow us the opportunity to do either the proposed text version A, B, or C?
As of now, the, we're contemplating version A. That's the exhibit. The exhibit is whichever one you are going to recommend. So we could just clarify, version A is going in as the exhibit, or version B is going in as the exhibit. So for example, a motion to adopt Resolution 2501 with version A as the exhibit.
Okay, thank you.
And the wording in the resolution, paragraph A specifically, references exhibit A as version A, I think. Is that correct?
It's talking about exhibit A just to the resolution. So in theory, exhibit A could be version B, could be version C.
I see, okay.
And if this were to be approved, wherein each line item, it says, parentheses, with any recommended modifications and revisions, if the approval of this, that would be removed from the language?
Because no modifications or recommendations are being added, you could just leave it in there, and there wouldn't be any. What that is referencing is if you go to page 2, paragraph 1, where it says, "The Planning Commission hereby recommends and submits the proposed zoning ordinance to the city council for the city of South Haven, the city council for its consideration and adoption, with the following modifications and revisions, if any. If there are none, if you have some, we can insert them into the resolution prior to your vote on it. If there are none, then we would just proceed as it is written."
So I'd make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Resolution 2501 with...
Yeah.
Version A is exhibit A.
Yeah. All right, so then I guess that's what I'm going to do. I'm going to make a motion to adopt Resolution 25-1, referencing exhibit A.
Is there support?
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any further discussion?
Yes, was that, so is that version A that you're...
That is version, version A. And I guess my additional discussion would be, and my thoughts are that we did provide council with our recommendations with text. They were not reviewed or, or really looked at. They gave us back something to work with, which is what I think we adjusted in our time together. And we came up with A as a group. And I feel like if they've given us that, we have had that discussion on their behalf, we will give it back to them. If they want to make a change that they're happy with and send us back, so we can go through this process again, great. But I don't want to spend additional time going back over this over and over again. I'd rather have what we had before, but I think this is what they've asked us to do.
Okay, anyone else?
Just a question. If there's significant changes to A when it gets to city council, does it have to come back here again? Or do they just get to do that? Are we going to get this back, is my question?
That's always the question, and it's, it's one of those gray areas. And yes, there is a possibility if substantial changes are made, that my recommendation would be to send it back to council. Or Planning Commission, yeah.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
Could we number the Resolution 2025-01?
01?
Yes. I know that wasn't your suggestion. Was there a reason for your numbering the way you...
I'd rather go with 2025-01 as opposed to 01.
Yes, that's, thank you. 01, thank you.
It's like a password.
Indeed.
Okay, anything else? All right, so we have this, we'll do a roll call vote.
Gruber?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Polk?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Barney?
Yes.
Stegman?
No. Okay, passes. All right, next, we have item 6, 241 Oak Street, Victoria's Resort, zoning map amendment, rezoning request. item six, 241 Oak Street, Victoria's Resort, zoning map amendment, rezoning request.
Okay, so Allison, and I will butcher her last name because I can't remember the pronunciation. Is it Katzer? Katzier? Coatsier? Has submitted a request to rezone the property at 241 Oak Street. This is also known as the Victoria Resort. This is a 2.7 acre property currently located in the R1B single-family district. The request is to rezone to RM1 multiple-family zoning, where resorts are a permitted use. The resort's currently a non-conforming use in the R1B single-family zoning district. As you are all aware, there has been an error in the public notice for the public hearing for this agenda item. Really just a transposition in the numbers for the address and the title of the item noticed. Therefore, we're recommending tonight that we hold the public hearing because the public hearing was noticed, and there are quite a few people here to speak on this item and have some discussion to the extent that you are willing. But we will also recommend that we notice a second hearing for a subsequent meeting and make any decision at that time.
Okay.
The applicants, the applicant is here, Allison is not, but Holly Purdy is here, her business partner, and is available to speak a little bit on the project, answer questions. And we can do that in any order that you like.
All right, first, I want you to at least put up a oh, I don't know. Maybe page 221? Does anybody have questions for staff at this point?
I, I have no questions for staff.
Blow it up just a touch.
I think they did a nice job of assisting and providing especially the findings for us with regards to the rezoning, section 2503. That was really good staff input.
I'd compliment the applicant as well for very thorough documentation of what they're suggesting. I enjoyed reading some of the history. Actually walked around the property the other day. A lot of history there, going all the way back to the 1920s. So a very thorough and complete job of making their case. So hats off to the applicant.
I told Kelly today, this is the best packet I've seen in all of my years. Here, so, good job, you guys. Very complete.
Okay, so we're very clear. Basically, this is an introduction. We'll still hold a public hearing. We'll end up closing that public hearing. It'll be re-noticed, and next month's meeting, the actual vote will take place. Everybody clear on that? Okay, so we'll have the applicant come up and give a little 411 on the, on what's proposed.
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
My name is Holly.
Make sure you use the microphone.
I'm the co-owner. Allison Coatsier is unfortunately not be able to make it. She is on a senior trip with her son in Costa Rica. So we have to do that, you know, being a mom. So I'm here to ask and to kind of describe what we're actually looking for. We're very excited to be in South Haven and to continue the history of, the long history actually, of the Victoria Resort. And we are asking for the rezoning mainly for a couple of things. One, we would like to be able to put in sidewalks for safety. There are some cottages and stuff that you have to go through the grass. It's uneven a little bit. And we would like our guests to have that ability to have the walkways. And in the current use, we're, I think, limited on that. Secondly, we would like to, there's a building in the back, and it's it's kind of an odd shape, and the two floors are different. And we would like to be able to make that space a gathering space, entertaining space, place where the people there, right now, there's no, there's a dining area where they eat, but there's actually no place for them to sit comfortably and to socialize and to enjoy that space. So we're, we're looking to kind of expand that building a little bit, not major. But we're gonna, I mean, those are our two major reasons why we would like to have it go into the right zoning, so that we have the ability to do that.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions while she's at the podium? No? Well, thank you.
I'll ask a question. I know you stated in the application, you have no current plans to do any further development of the property?
We do not.
And that's reassuring, but not something I can hang my hat on, I don't think. But I just wanted to confirm that.
We really, really are here to maintain the history and the, you know, the long history and the footprint of the property. We really think that it's amazing place and space, and we think the guests really do also. So we don't have any plans to put in anything crazy. We truly are looking for like the sidewalks and to make that building a gathering space.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else here? Well, thank you very much. Okay, entertain a motion to open a public hearing.
I move to open a public hearing on
Support.
the proposed rezoning of the Victoria Resort property.
Second.
Has anyone been supported? Any other discussion? Seeing none or in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Public hearing is open. You wish to speak on this item, please come to the podium, state your name, address. You'll have five minutes. How many plan to speak on this item this evening? One, two, three, four, five, okay. There's a seat up here that's marked reserved. So if anybody, if somebody's at podium, if we can kind of get a round robin going, so we're not wasting too much time walking up to the podium.
If you're British, you will queue.
Or if you're American baseball, you're on deck.
You're on deck.
All right. Please go ahead. Remember to use the microphone, tilt it however you need to.
Hi, I'm Lorna Wittes. I own the property just east of the Victoria Resort. I actually, our properties meet. I'm at 430, 438 and 440 Park. While I'm in favor of the change, I do have a question with the new rezoning. What would the setbacks be changed to in terms of if there's ever development later on?
Okay, anything else?
No, I mean, I know the history of the property too. The people that I bought my property from owned the Victoria Resort before Jan and Bob had it. And there is a lot of history there. I'm all for the improvements. But I am concerned and do want to know what the future setbacks could be for any new development.
All right.
Anybody know that answer?
I'll make a note.
Yeah, we'll get
We'll address those as we go on. Okay?
Thank you. Next?
Next.
Good evening, I'm Sigrid Hahn. I own the property, my husband and I own the property that abuts Victoria Resort directly behind it, 232 Brockway Avenue. We've been there for 15 years. We love Victoria Resort. We're excited to hear that the new owners are interested in maintaining it and making some minor improvements. The issue is multifamily use zoning opens this property up to a lot of things that are completely inappropriate in a residential area. That would add a lot of traffic, add a lot of noise, add a lot of more people. Some of the possible uses that are permitted under multiple family, multifamily use are foster care homes, group homes, apartments, hospitals, educational facilities, places of public assembly, assisted living, senior housing. I mean, there, there doesn't seem to be any sort of guarantee at all that this isn't what would happen down the road. I think the current owners, what they're saying sounds great. We, we're so excited that they want to keep and improve this property. However, the door is being opened to some things that are really inappropriate in that neighborhood. I know ultimately, the master plan, because I actually read all these, the 600 pages or whatever on your website. The master plan, I know, includes making this to resort zoning. And I understand there's some special use or special exception zoning that could happen where it could be strictly resort with some more limitations so that all this, these other possibilities can't occur. So we're speaking, as it stands right now, I have to speak against the rezoning.
Next.
Good evening, I'm Michelle Thiem, and I am at 223 Oak Street, which is immediately to the west of the Victoria property. I am in favor of the ability for the new owners to be able to improve the property in ways that make sense with the use that it is currently in practical terms being used for, for many, many years. I feel that the sale of the property with the zoning being single-family seems incongruent to the use, and I find it very confusing that it wasn't already zoned for resort. So I am in fa, while I am saying I am in favor of the changes, what I really would prefer would be a a common sense approach, which would eliminate the possibility of there being some of the uses that were discussed by the previous speaker, and yet allow some freedom for the current owners to use the property as it is intended and has been historically, and be able to improve the property, which will help all of our property values. Thank you.
Next.
Good evening, my name is Elizabeth Diaz. Address is 230 Brockway. I am speaking on behalf of my family, in particular, my father-in-law, who owns the property. I am neighbors to Sig and Mark. And I, from the previous speaker before the last one, we are also voting against this rezoning. This property has been in my family for nearly 50 years. My father-in-law has been to several of these hearings for previous owners, and we are against the rezoning for everything that Sig has said already. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Tony Corolo. I have a house at 242 Oak Street. Our driveway leads right to the tennis court that's currently on the property over there. What I'd like to do is read the letter that I put in the packet, if you don't mind. It says, "Dear members of the planning commission, as a resident neighbor of the Victoria Resort, I'm writing to strongly oppose the proposed zoning change from RB1 single-family resident to RM1 multifamily residential. This change threatens the character, scale, overall integrity of the community, and sets a troubling precedent for future development. The developers' request to bring the property to compliance with the current zoning regulations seems procedural, but it's clear the real intent is to allow much higher density and taller buildings that is currently permitted. Under R1B zoning structures, structures are limited to a height of 35 feet with maximum coverage of 35% and specific setbacks to preserve neighborhoods' open spaces. In contrast, RM1 zoning would permit a much taller building, up to 40 feet and three stories, and allow more intensive use to the properties and a potential increase in the number of residential units. While RM1 technically permits 30% lot coverage, slightly less than the R1B 35%, the trade-off is significantly increased in density, which would place strain on local infrastructure, increase traffic, and alter visual and environmental character of our community. The RM1 district has more flexible setback requirements, meaning structures could be built closer to property lines, reducing privacy, diminishing the open residential feel the current exists in the neighborhood. There is no legitimate reason for the property to be zoned right now unless there are plans for redevelopment, which would substantially change the site. Pushing the zoning change to before public is fully aware feels like an attempt to bypass community input. Approving the rezoning without a clear transparent development plan would significantly alter the fabric of South Haven, one that relies on the existing character to attract residents and visitors alike. I urge the commission to deny the rezoning request and permit the integrity of our neighborhood and protect the integrity of our neighborhood. It is important that the proposed changes, zoning be accompanied by a full and open discussion with the community to ensure the development is truly in line with the values and needs of the people who live here. Thanks for your time and consideration. Sincerely, the Corolo family, 242 Oak Street." Just one other comment. I'm not sure that the, the current owner has a permit to be a resort. I don't know if there's a permit permitting process. But I think we, someone should take a look at that also. And the question of whether it's a B and B, I'm not sure that that really makes a whole lot of sense in this, in this case. But please consider the alternatives. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Lisa Croupiars, 561 Indiana. I live in Ward 1, but I'm here speaking on behalf of neighbors in this area surrounding this proposed development. These developers, as Commissioner Nichols said, it was a very impressive packet that was submitted. And as well as should be, as these developers are very skilled at this business and should be presenting a very impressive plan because they have done this type of thing many times before. I was, someone shared with me that there is a profile done on Allison Coatsier with the National Real Estate Investors Association. And she has many, many properties with 100 units total. Grand Rapids, Cooper'sville, Sturgis. And she has, this has become her, her profession. So this is a developer coming in and taking over a property. I'm with Commissioner Sherman. That unfortunately, many have come before this board before and stated their plan only to change it after the fact, which I and others are apparently very concerned about. Sort of the bait and switch type of thing. There have been lots of violations in the past at this property that have not necessarily resulted in citations. And this has been very disadvantageous to the neighborhood. So this property does have a reputation of having, being non-compliant and without having follow-up from the city to give them citations. So this is also a concern going forward. This area, this neighborhood is zoned as single-family residential and should remain this way. There is a one-lane street to access this property only, and it does not accommodate the increased traffic that will result if rezoned. And if the idea that Oak Street is going to be widened, that would not be appropriate for the neighborhood. So I do support the neighborhood in this situation to not rezone this property. Thank you.
John Lordstorf of 23 Delaware. I also know people who are within the 300-foot area are very concerned because this would amount to a spot zoning. They already have a use right now which can continue. Resorts are supposed to be located on main roads. This could open up to conventions. This would not be a good area to have increased traffic. But one of the things the planning commission could consider would be a conditional rezoning. Thereby, you could put certain conditions on there because if we're just talking about a few things like sidewalks and so on, that probably can be accommodated. But once you zone it that way, there's all kinds of other uses that can come to play. You can have somebody else decide to buy it, knowing that there, all the other uses could be used. And you're going to open up to a very more dense type of project in the middle of residential properties. So as a, as a previous person just said, there's just too many unknown things. But once you open that zone up, anything then can go in the future. And I think that, I think it would be much better to have And I think that, I think it would be much better to have some more control on it. It has been in front of the Planning Commission and the council before, and they've been turned down. But I don't think rezoning would be appropriate at this time. Thank you.
I will have to say though, one of those statements he made, if you look at where all the resorts were on the main roads, they've all been demolished now. And they're either condominiums or single-family homes, like six of them in a row, so. I think the main road argument isn't quite, is maybe something that was more applicable sixty years ago. This is just one relic that's left over there. I think almost the only one. Anyone else?
My name's Dick Kavanaugh, I live across the street in the Landings. I don't know if I heard-
Use the microphone, please. Pull the microphone up a little bit.
I don't know if I heard the lady right.
There you go.
But all they want to do is remodel a building in the back and put sidewalks in, can't they just get permits for that? Why do we have to have a rezoning? And like, like the previous speaker said, I've seen that before. People zone something, and then all of a sudden they, you know, once they get the foot in, they just move. And there we are.
Agreed. That's why we don't have as much commercial property around here anymore. It's all turned into residential, especially along the river.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else? Once, twice, three times? Okay, entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
I move we close the public hearing.
Support.
Then moved and supported. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, most carries. Any further comments other than this will have to be noticed again by city staff?
A question, please. I'll direct it to Kelly, but I'll defer to Kate or attorney. Should this be rezoned? As, as a couple folks have mentioned, it opens up multiple other uses. Apartments, condominiums, retirement homes, childcare, et cetera. So my question is, if, if it was rezoned and any of those uses were proposed, would those have to come before planning for approval before they could proceed?
Yes, any significant redevelopment of the site would be required to come before the Planning Commission with a site plan. Potentially a special land use request, depending on the proposed use. A proposed, a significant structure from, i- if the site were rezoned, would have to come in front of the Planning Commission with a site plan as well. They wouldn't, a rezoning doesn't allow the property owner just to place any, any new building on the site. The RM1 district does require site plan review.
Thanks. I, I just wanted to confirm that. And secondly, if, if the rezoning is not done, I believe, and I'd like to just confirm, the current owner could do what they are suggesting they would do, sidewalks and remodeling of a cottage on the property and so on. That could proceed without a change in zoning, is that correct?
I think some limited site improvements could be done. A new structure at, at the back, a new community building, as applicant mentioned, would not be able to happen.
Okay.
And I, and I guess the best discussion would be left for when we can take action. But zoned today as R1B, they are allowed to, and I think all the neighbors here are also R1B, are allowed to have adult foster care homes and small group homes by right, and childcare homes, and public facilities. And with special land use, they could also have public places of assembly and educational facilities. So that's actually allowed by everybody that I think spoke here today.
Yes.
Can have that on their property as well. So, moving to R1 doesn't necessarily open up those activities because those are allowed by right today.
Yes. The, the R1B zoning does not permit resort use. The RM1 does.
And this would actually get them conforming.
Yes, it's an effort to bring the property into some conformance, to allow them to make some changes on the property.
That would be technically a good thing, to bring properties into conformance.
Yes, and the master plan contemplates that for this property in particular.
Okay.
And one other thing, if I could, I'm sorry, Janice. John mentioned the idea of a conditional rezoning.
Yes.
And for the record, that's something that the applicant would have to present and propose those restrictions, correct? That's not something that Planning Commission could impose on the owner, correct?
That's right. That's right. It is an option that our current zoning ordinance does permit. And again, like you stated, Commissioner Sherman, the applicant has to propose in writing conditions that they would be willing to agree to. And that was, is obviously not something we have ready for you this evening. But if the applicant wanted to propose those conditions, it's certainly something that they could bring to my attention and we could discuss.
Thanks, Kelly. Thanks for clarifying.
One other clarification. So if the applicant is going to rehab the building in the back for communal space, will that site plan have to come before us, or does that just go with the property?
Right, it really depends on the extent of the renovation. So certain things can be done now. The R zoning ordinance does permit non-conforming structures to be maintained. So things like siding, roofing, window replacements, we want structures to be maintained in sound, safe condition. But any expansion of footprint would not be permitted right now at all. If a rezoning were to be approved, I anticipate that significant redevelopment of the site, like a large new structure, would come in front of the Planning Commission on a site plan.
There were also some questions on setbacks?
Oh, yes. And the RM1 setbacks in that district, oh, I know that's tiny again, sorry. So, front yard setbacks are twenty-five feet, side yard twelve, rear yard twenty-five. And so the site, obviously, we, we saw the aerial, it looks like there's some currently, likely some non-conformity there in terms of setbacks. But again, we're talking about the use and not situational or dimensional non-conformity.
Right. Then there was another one, there were some heavy accusations of violations, even though this is a new owner, a past owner's been violating all sorts of city ordinances. I'm not aware of it, but there was that accusation made.
Yeah, not during my time with the city. I can't speak to what may have occurred prior to my employment with the city.
Do you know of anything, Kate?
I know there's been some allegations that it was not being used with, with, so the idea is that it has to, so anybody on the property is supposed to be staying at the property. I think there's been allegations in the past that they were having events where people were coming there but weren't staying there. But that's the extent of what I understand.
All right. So that's, that's pretty serious, you know? So, no. Sorry, but no, we've already had the public hearing. All right, and anything else? Then we'll just push off to next month's meeting with proper, and city apologizes for having you come out tonight and have, having to wait another month for a decision, but.
And we will reopen the public meeting.
We will reopen the public hearing. If you wish to come back and repeat what you said or add to your comments, you're more than welcome. And the date of our next meeting is?
May eighth.
May eighth. May eighth, we will reconsider 241 Oak Street.
Potentially, that-
Potentially.
That would be the goal. I, it's to some extent, that will depend on the noticing.
Right, as of right now, that is the plan. Okay, item seven, master plan update.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody wish to leave? I'll, I'll hold up for one minute. That would clear the room and keep the noise to a minimum.
And we can't see you on camera, so you're safe to leave and not feel embarrassed.
Is the attorney staying with us for the whole meeting? Okay, true. All right, may want to pull the mic down?
My, my first time on Planning Commission Chairman Paul was our chairman, and his wife just left and didn't get a chance to say something. But Dave Paul was quite the parliamentarian, and he dressed me down more than once. For, for being out of line, which was awesome. I learned a lot.
Okay.
Okay.
Off we go.
All right, the Planning Commission has been working for a number of months on the master plan update. We are nearing the point, or potentially have reached a point, where it would be time for this body to submit the plan to the city council with a recommendation that council distribute the plan for the required sixty-three, sixty-three day comment period. So Becca Schrag with the Southwest Michigan Planning Commission is here. If you remember, Mike Campbell requested a brief presentation just to kind of cover some of the major changes that we've made. And so Becca has prepared that presentation for tonight for the public, many of whom exited the room just now. But we'll go ahead and give the presentation. And then if you all are ready to make that recommendation, you can do that. The one thing that I know we wanted to talk about that has not been addressed yet was the future land use map in Ward One. There is a section that has been designated as mixed use, and there's been some conversation about whether or not that should be reverted to single-family designation. So before we leave tonight, we need to have that, or before there's any action, if you're ready for action, we should make sure to have that conversation. And with that, I will turn it over to Becca.
Okay. Yeah, so I'm Becca Schrag with the Southwest Michigan Planning Commission. Been working on the master plan update for a couple of months now. So I'm going to give a brief overview of the purpose for the update, some of the big changes from the 2018 master plan to now, and that includes, you know, the new chapter and the future land use. And I'll also go over some of the public input that has happened and still has yet to happen. So, some of the factors that played into whether the city was going to do an update or a full revamp of the master plan was mainly because the city got a grant to review and update the plan with a resilient coastal community lens. So that grant has finished, and we submitted the plan with the additional chapter on coastal resilience, and that played a big role in deciding just to do an update. Other factors included that many of the goals and objectives from the 2018 plan were still relevant. And with the zoning ordinance update, there were some changes that could be made to the language to make it more up-to-date. Another big factor in choosing to do an update rather than a new plan was all of the public input that went into the 2018 plan. I have that listed there. There was a community survey, numerous workshops, a bus tour, charrette, and an open house, and then numerous meetings, public comment, and a public hearing. So far, for the current update, we have done a community survey and had almost five hundred responses, which is incredible turnout. I've never seen that in a survey before. And that survey focused mainly on coastal resilience and housing. We also had a public open house where twenty members of the public attended, and at that open house, we talked about the coastal resilience goals as well as the different housing types that were presented by Ryan Kilpatrick. And the public had an opportunity to talk about what they liked and didn't like about all of the various different housing types. And all of that is included in the update. Going forward, well, actually, sorry, there has also been lots of discussion here at the Planning Commission meetings. We've, I've been here a couple of times. I know you guys have talked about it without me here, and every Planning Commission meeting is open to the public. So going forward, again, maybe some more Planning Commission meetings, maybe a city council meeting. But there is the sixty-three day review. That includes review by the county, both Van Buren and Aligan, as well as all of the neighboring jurisdictions. And that includes a public comment period and a public hearing. So all of that is still yet to come with this master plan update. Okay, so getting into the actual changes in the plan. In the community description, we added a section on short-term rentals. This section just added language to talk about some of the history of the short-term rentals and the conversion of single-family homes to short-term rentals. It talks about the, how that change has intensified the housing crisis, its increased property values and the cost of housing, and some of the issues that have arisen from that, including that employers are having trouble finding stable housing for their workforce and the issues that that can cause having a stable workforce. Also in this section is a statement about the city being committed to preserving the residential character and balancing economic factors and tourism through policies. If you want a word-by-word, you can go to the master plan and look at what that says. Okay, so then we also added an entire chapter on coastal resilience. This chapter was entirely adapted from two studies that the city of South Haven had completed. The first one was from LEA on the planning for coastal and climate trends and edgewater resources, the shoreline analysis. In this, in this chapter, there are two sections, flooding and coastal resilience, and I'll get into them a little bit. So in the flooding section, we included a lot of different maps. All of those are listed here. But the section talks about how with increased precipitation and more intense storms, the city could see an increase in flooding and more properties having issues with, with flooding and standing water. So I'm just going to talk briefly on some of these maps. Like the natural resources and sensitive environments kind of shows high-risk flooding areas and erosion as well as wetlands. The wetland function for water quality can show where in the city of South Haven wetlands might have the ability to store sediment and filter pollutants. The wetland function for floodwater can show where wetlands can absorb some of that floodwater and reduce flooding within the city. The tree canopy, impervious surfaces, and impervious surfaces in the tree canopy all kind of show how green infrastructure can be included and how stormwater management might be introduced going forward. And then the future climate scenarios is a map taken out of the LEA study as well. So that shows, you know, the lucky and perfect scenarios for if there's a storm and what that looks like in the city. For coastal erosion section of this chapter, this is very much the implementation of how to reduce erosion along the shoreline. So it includes factors like the height and length of whatever you're putting into control erosion. Talks about tow protection, what type of materials are being used, as well as the sustainability of those materials and the infrastructure that's being put in. And then this table is straight out of the master plan. It goes through the advantages and disadvantages of each type of coastal erosion measure. And that is taken from the edgewater resources study. So based on the coastal resilience chapter, some of the feedback that we had at the public open house, we added some objectives to the natural resources and sensitive environments goal. So those are up here briefly. They are, one of them is to collaborate to preserve natural assets via easements and acquisitions. One of them is to develop an overlay zoning district for sensitive environmental features to protect them from new development. Another is to develop standards to control the quality and quantity of stormwater so that we can protect water quality and channel integrity. Other objectives under this goal include enacting land use regulations to protect natural beach using best practices, exploring regulations that prioritize the use of soft shoreline stabilization as mentioned in Chapter Two, developing a coastal setback ordinance overlay dis- or overlay district, and strengthening South Haven's coastal resilience by implementing some of the subactions like sending out materials to residents and visitors about coastal information, and engaging the public directly, exploring mechanisms to prevent the removal of dune grasses and some other strategies there. So then the other big change in this new master plan update is the future land use. So for the 2025 future land use map, we removed categories from the 2018 master plan. Those categories are the attached urban housing, transitional- Those categories are the attached urban housing, transitional neighborhood edge, campus village, and overton property. The reasoning for the removal of those is that the zoning ordinance update occurred and none of these were in there. And so to kind of align it with the new zoning ordinance, it made sense to remove those. And the overton property was not removed completely. It was just added into the multifamily section. We also renamed the regional commercial to be called major thoroughfare business to align with the zoning ordinance and then revamped and added to the mixed-use designation. So a lot of the language from the attached urban housing and transitional neighborhood edge was added into the mixed-use section, which I'm going to talk about right now. So the mixed-use section, if you haven't read it, hopefully you did, it has a lot of language to, that supports enhancing walkability of neighborhoods. It's got language to provide a wide range of uses, including retail, offices, residential services. It includes language to integrate solutions like the missing middle, as Ryan Kilpatrick mentioned. So that includes a list of housing types that were favorable during the open house. It also includes language to maintain and enhance neighborhood character. I know that that has been a big conversation in a lot of our meetings and that the public has brought up is that keeping the existing neighborhood character is important. So that was included in there. And there's language to complement existing neighborhoods, so not just maintaining, but also complementing surrounding neighborhoods. So then this is the 2018 future land use map on the left and the proposed future land use map on the right. Again, you won't see any of the transitional neighborhood edge or the attached urban housing. Most of that land has been turned into mixed use in the current iteration of the future land use map. You'll also notice that none of the township future land use is included. It was messy and difficult to kind of understand where the city limits are and so we cleaned that up. And so you'll see on the right what it is currently. Just a couple of points, the 425 agreement area, we, you all decided to have mixed use, so that is new in this iteration, as well as the section in Ward One is also new in this iteration. And all of the transitional neighborhood edge, as I mentioned, has been transitioned into mixed use. And just a comment that the future land use does not mean that this is how it's zoned. It's just thinking very far into the future of what might be and the possibilities. So going forward, again, there's still a lot of public input to happen, including the approving for distribution. That'll be a public meeting. Again, there's a judicial review. As I said, Van Buren County Planning Commission, Alleghen County Planning Commission, all of the neighboring municipal planning commissions, public utility companies, railroad companies, public transit agencies, and the public all have an opportunity to comment on the plan. And then there's the public comment and review and a public hearing all before the plan is adopted. So just as a reminder that there's still lots of public input to be had throughout this entire process.
All right, thank you very much. Any additional comments? Or can I get a motion to review and recommend distribution? It doesn't always have to be you, Clark.
I don't know. I'm not going to. I'm not going to this time. I know it doesn't have to be me. I know it took a long time last time, but we got, we got somewhere. I guess there is that piece of mixed use in Ward One that was discussed for future land use.
It's like a transition zone for
Yeah.
What's currently happening there.
And I think that, I thought that was something that was requested by a particular current landowner.
So we did receive a request from a landowner in that area who the, it's a local church that owns some property that they envisioned could become some multifamily housing, but I think small, three, four units. And if my memory serves, the Planning Commission discussed that and also looked at other opportunities that might be available in that area of town, considering the trailside development to the west, the industrial area to the south, the school's property to the east, and thought that it was a nice opportunity potentially in the future for some mixed use, additional density. Now ultimately, that's, that's your decision, whether you'd like to keep things as they're currently shown or reconsider.
And again, that doesn't necessarily say this is what we, you know, it's a, it's a future potential, but we don't really have anything to, to put there. No one has brought a project there.
No.
It, it would need a rezoning potentially to begin with. So it would be a process with public input and, and a process that would have to come before us. I'm, I'm just wondering, you know, and that's a transitional use? That's what we have that under?
Mixed use.
Under mixed use.
Because the transitional use was from the 2018 plan and that's been phased out.
That's the one that's phased out, yeah.
Planning ahead.
Yes.
I wonder if I could ask Kelly or Becca, whatever, I'm fuzzy, maybe I'm the only one. The 425 agreement area, could you give me some history on that and what it's, what it's about and how did that come to be? And within the 425 agreement area, it looks like that's all currently, or proposed to be mixed use. Can you give me some history there, please?
I'll tag in.
Oh, please, thank you.
So the city had been working with the township for some time in trying to, if you, if you, pardon the expression, beautify the entries into the city. And this was a corridor that needed some help. And when we, we were talking about things, senior services had not been located there at that time. And so they're just that, that kind of area was needing some assistance. Of course, the old junkyard was over there. So this was an opportunity that we thought that we could bring this in for a limited amount of time, use some of our tools to help kind of redevelop this area and give it a good look. And then the idea is that it's going back to the township at the end of the 425 period. We shared taxes on that and then we were using city's code enforcement tools as well as commercial rehab to induce redevelopment in this area.
Okay, thanks.
And if we push this forward out for review, does that mean we are done with any decision-making or any changes to this plan or could there be adjustments?
There could be, oh geez, sorry about that. There could be adjustments still based on the public input that is received.
Okay.
I think the City Council may request some changes and ideally, ideally those changes would be made, any changes that we know about now should be made before we send it for distribution in an ideal world. And then once we receive all of the input back from neighboring jurisdictions, any other public comment, then there would be another opportunity to make any last changes before adoption.
Okay. Question for you.
Yes.
Are you familiar with the building envelope in the South Beach?
Is that a new bird? Is that a bird species?
No, building envelope.
Oh, okay.
Are you familiar with this?
The building envelope on the South Beach?
Yes.
I'm, I'm not sure.
Okay, so when I was on City Council and we did the water plant, we had to make sure we could add a second water plant, which is a parking area, and that wasn't included in the park because we were worried wouldn't be allowed to build the second water plant if that was parkland.
Parkland.
Right. We also, because the old concession stand was torn down, created a area that's defined as a building envelope where a brick-and-mortar structure could be built again in the park. Okay? So one thing I was thinking with the Overton property is we should have a building envelope in that area for possible future restrooms for the bike trail or a rest spot. So I'd like that included for discussion. Because I think, I've talked to Covert and they're thinking of maybe putting a restroom, rest area on their end. And that would enhance that trail quite a bit. I don't know. I was going to use this comment later, but I think it'd be worth discussing. We keep hearing about character of the neighborhood. I think with the Overton property, maybe we should discuss loting that off for a single-family.
Well, as you know, the city has, had one, one interested party that's looking at the Overton site. It's the Dwelling Place, which is a nonprofit out of Grand Rapids. There should be some, there should be, the council will be looking at an agreement to make with Dwelling Place at their next meeting. But they are, they're contemplating a pretty expansive plan of the, of the parcel with a large multifamily unit there with, I think, up to 50 apartments and then scattered duplexes around the site.
So anyway, maybe that goes and if it doesn't, maybe it should just be single-family. Next one, Sherman Hills property. We've included that on this plan, correct, to work on that. I think that's important. And then the empty land between Sherman Hills and College. We, as we've seen lately, it looks like there's going to be a big push for domestic manufacturing. And how is our economic, how are we advertising that property? And are we willing to really give some concessions for some major, like if somebody came in and said, yeah, I'll build there and 150 jobs manufacturing, if you waive taxes for 15 years and hookup fees, I mean, are we considering that kind of thing to really draw a major manufacturer in?
Well, currently, the city doesn't really have much property there. What we do have left is three acres, which is being marketed right now. It's on our website. What you do see there is a lot of open land that is either owned by another entity in the park or they're holding on to it. So just north of Second Avenue is about 40 acres. That's zoned industrial, light industrial, that could be prime spot for manufacturing. And then, of course, just north of that is the Sherman Hills area, which is RM1, but seems to not get off the ground.
Those were my last minute. I know we have stuff in there already, but what I just gave was a little bit more explicit this time. And the building envelope's important because when I was on City Council and RJ Peterson took possession of the old National Motors property, had I not been on council, we wouldn't have had the bike trail, the old railroad line. The city would end up having to buy that back from him. But we kept that in the agreement to start with and it saved us probably about 80 grand. So I would say we'd do the same thing this time is carve off a little section next to the trail if we ever wanted to build a small rest area or include a bathroom for that trail.
Not a bad idea.
Okay, anyone else? Now, let's get a motion going. And the motion would be to submit the plan to the City Council for review and recommend distribution for the required sixty-three day comment period.
Yes, that would be the motion. Now, I guess I'd like clarification from the group on whether or not we should make these changes that were suggested by the chairman.
Or you can make this recommendation and I'll go back and make those as amendments.
Yeah, either way.
Or I need somebody else to, I can't do it.
Got you.
I move to forward the master plan update as provided to City Council for public hearing and adoption.
If I could clarify, the public hearing will happen at this level at Planning Commission, but council will have to approve the plan for distribution for the sixty-three day comment period.
So we can only submit to City Council?
To City Council.
For review?
For review and distribution.
And distribution, okay.
I support that.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Anything else?
Want to hand me your list? Do you want me to do?
Well, you can just refer to it.
Okay.
There were four items.
Okay. So do I have to?
Just amend it to.
Okay, I would like to suggest an amendment of Chair's four items to this, what's the word I'm looking for?
Submission.
Submission, thank you.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion?
Can we have them repeated, please?
Consider loting off Overton. So it's character of the neighborhood, which is single-family. Sherman Hills, developed effort towards that. Empty land in between Sherman Hills and the LMC, that we actually have a good plan for marking it with some incentives. And then a building envelope at the Overton property, should it not be lotted off or even if it is lotted off for future, if you wanted to, even if it's as much as putting a picnic table there, city should maintain the ownership of a small part of it next to the old railroad right-of-way. If you're ever going to develop that trail, you need a trailhead. We don't really have one.
Yeah, I, I like those. I just don't like the, the loting off of Overton to.
That's why, that's why I said a possible consideration. Should another big project fail, it can't sit there forever empty.
Well, no, but it deserves a public project.
Does it? It's not consistent with the character of the neighborhood that we keep hearing all over the place. So.
Again, these are just recommendations.
Just to have that talk again.
Yeah.
I'm not saying actually do it. I'm saying it's worth a talk again.
Do we have to include it in order to have that talk?
Well, I don't understand.
I mean, you're doing the amendment, but can we still have that conversation if we don't pass those amendments?
I suppose you could. I just wanted this mentioned in the master plan so it jogs the memory when those items come up. It's just a master plan. It doesn't approve anything.
Sure.
It's not, it's not legally binding, really.
True, but I, hopefully it also reflects the feelings of a majority of members and I'm just not a fan of somehow not finding the right public benefit project with a property owned by the city of South Haven, which is, you know, Overton, because I think single-family, any developer could do. This gives us an opportunity to look at missing middle or some kind of housing above and beyond just the standard single-family. So I, I'm just not a fan of that being a thought for Overton.
You're going to get the missing middle if you work on Sherman Hills. The Overton one, I don't think you can unless you put in really dense housing and I don't know anybody that wants that over there.
I just meant, there's got to be more of a public benefit. I'm sorry, I'm not on the microphone. More of a public benefit than just single-family. I, I don't necessarily see that where the, the project at, at hand coming, I see as a, a public benefit.
How long has it been sitting vacant?
Since 2015.
Ten years. If you'd allotted it off. If you'd allotted it off, you'd had houses there eight years ago and collecting property tax money and utility money. So I'm not saying you have to do it. I'm saying it's worth the discussion again when that item comes up. I don't think it's that big a deal. It's non-binding.
I don't have a problem with it. I figure, I, I mean, it looks, it sounds like it's already got the next iteration happening. So it may be an absolute moot point when we're done with all of this.
Maybe, or maybe this one falls apart too. You've got next step to go to.
I sort of think like, as Clark did, I'll leave that option open rather than put that potential of, of residential. That can be discussed at another time, but I think just, just leaving the option open for, for um, the missing metal on that property of Overton is the way I'd like to see it go.
I don't think you'll get it. It's gonna be too expensive to develop. Anyway, there we go.
So we have to vote on the amendments?
Yeah. We can do them all as one. You can vote them all down or not.
Do you have a second?
amend the amendments?
Yeah, there was a second.
There was a second on the amendment?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you wanna amend the amendments? Can we do that? How many times, I mean, I get lost when we do all those.
Well, usually I do them individually, one at a time, but I figured one fell swoop. Either you like it or you don't, you know? Don't waste any time on it.
I think it would be great to take them.
Who seconded the amendment?
Sherman, we have Sherman.
Bob did, okay.
Okay, any other discussion? We'll just do a vote, I guess, roll call?
Is this on the amendment?
Yeah.
On the amendment.
Nichols?
Yes.
Polk?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Varney?
No.
Gruber?
No.
Stagman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so now you have the motion as amended. Any other discussion on that? Okay, change none. We'll do roll call again.
Polk?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Varney?
Yes.
Gruber?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Stagman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, there we go. Master plan on its way. Now, we have public comment. Citizens of the audience, may address planning commission regarding items not in the agenda. Does anybody who'd like to, by the way, thank you for coming in and giving the uh, synopsis.
Thank you.
Does anybody who'd like to address the planning commission, uh, any items we haven't discussed so far? Once, twice. Ready? Come on up, come on up.
Hello, my name is Kane Goodson. I reside at six oh nine Chamber Street, right behind Jake Way Realty. I have sent emails to Mr. Arnold, my ward person, which has said that she'd forward them to Ms. Hozier. I have issues with, I don't know if this is the right venue either. I'm, I'm just getting into this city stuff. The way the internet was handled in the surf internet and my yard being tore up. Um, I've made complaints to uh, the building inspector over the years about Jake Way Realty's uh, drainage that involve their, I'm, I'm just gonna do it this way. Their property goes down into my property. They have two water spouts to the, or downspouts from their house, from their building that do not go to the road. They go out the back and into my yard. I have put in a sump pump. I have put in downspouts and, and gutters on my house to try to alleviate water drainage into my house and I'm still getting flooded. I just recently sent pictures to Mr. Arnold, who was supposed to send them to Ms. Hozier. Uh, I've been complaining about this for like five years.
So runoff?
Yes.
Okay.
And it drains into my house and drains into my basement and why do I, why do I as a, as a customer, I've tried to talk to them over the past. They're a business. They're not listening to me.
Okay.
On top of that, if you can imagine, I'll, I'll just do it this way. So this is the backside of their, of building. This is the front side. They have a downspout here and a downspout here and nothing in the front. So all their water coming off their building, downspouts back over to my drop, to my property, flooding my backyard.
Understood.
That's a planning thing to me or code in violation or whatever, but I have tried.
You're right. It's a code. Kelly will look into it for us.
I've, I don't remember talking to Kelly about this situation, but we've had other conversations about other things.
We try to stop them before they happen.
Right.
And then you deal with city staff and council for when things go wrong.
Yeah, um.
So.
With, with the internet, so I'm just gonna go into a couple things. I'm sorry, this is just my perspective because I'm getting tired of my, things around my property.
All we can do for you is what you just said with Kelly.
Yes, sir.
That's it. She will look into it.
Um, the cable, when they put them in, they messed up my front yard, which is between the driveway and the side, or the road and sidewalk.
Mine too. It's still messed up.
It is still messed up, but I, then they give stupid reasons and you try to talk to them and I'm sorry, I don't, I don't accept. I don't accept, oh, well, we'll get to it in a year. You know, why should I have to deal with that? I'm gonna get in trouble. I get, uh, and another thing I would like to bring up is parking enforcement on the side of the road in the wintertime. Is that something I can bring up and is this a situation I can bring up? Is that, is this?
I don't know. It depends what you're angling for.
Okay. I have a very small driveway. I can only fit two vehicles in my driveway. If I have family come and visit, I either have to park on the side of the road in Jake Way's parking lot, somewhere else and during heavy snow removal, I respect and understand the reason why there's ticketing for this. But if there is no snow on the road dirt, between this, the winter months, can there be something done about not getting a ticket? Cause if I've got three vehicles from the back of my property to the front of my property and I don't have room to park, I gotta park somewhere. If it, I'm not saying wintertime specifically, actually I am saying wintertime. I'm saying when there's no snow to be removed.
Good question.
Why should I get a ticket when there's no snow to be removed?
Good question. We'll look into it.
Okay, I'm sorry. I don't know. I'm just starting to get into this.
No, that's, that's fine.
I come in here today just to listen and pay attention, but I like, I had a chance to speak and ask questions.
Yep.
And I do plan coming to more different things.
Try to help everybody what, way we can.
I do plan, I appreciate your time and uh, oh yeah, I'm really nervous, so.
Okay.
I like to talk, but I'm still nervous. Thank you for your time.
Yep. Good thing you showed up tonight, Kate.
Lisa Crouby ours, five sixty-one Indiana. Um, just a note, um, it was brought up at either the, one of the more recent city council meetings or at planning commission that there is no definition for resort in our zoning ordinance. So.
Did that get erased? There was.
So that, that was identified and I know it came up in the other conversation with Victoria Resort, but I'm speaking more or, zoning ordinance related. So um.
Yeah, it's in there.
Letting you know.
It's in there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, very good.
It's in there. Can you tell me where?
Yeah, it's under R for resorts and it says a place typically seasonal entertainment, recreation and or lodging. Resort lodging, if provided, may include hotels, motels, single or multifamily slash residential dwelling units. Condos, campgrounds, bed and breakfasts, or some combination as regulated by appropriate sections of this ordinance. And it's on page, it's in article two of definitions.
It, what page is it on?
Um, it says two dash, two twenty-four.
Two dash, two twenty-four?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
Two dash twenty-four.
Two dash twenty-four?
Yep.
Okay.
Excellent. Anybody else? Once, twice, three times? Okay. Temporary signed zoning text amendments.
All right. This evening, your packet contains revised non-permanent sign regulations based on our discussion at the March meeting. And there were three categories, I guess I would say, for these revisions. And um, the first area of changes, I would say, is residential versus non-residential. So currently our sign regu- regulations for, we are only talking now, I will clarify about non-permanent signs, temporary signs, non-permanent signs. So the current regulations um, regulate these signs differently for residential lots than for residential lots. And based on discussion at the March meeting, the proposed text um, will treat them more similarly. So we have a cap on the total square footage per lot with a size limit on individual signs rather than a hard cap on the number of signs, which is something that we talked about last time. It sounds like a mouthful when I say it there. And non-permanent signs are regulated by district rather than use on the lot. And the benefit of this is that we'll just have uniform regulation for an entire district rather than having the code officer try to determine what type of use he's seeing on the lot. Okay, and R one, R two and MHC districts have been included in residential where RM one was placed in non-residential because this seemed more consistent with how multifamily lots were being um, treated. The text does not separate the central business district or B two district from other non-residential districts. We talked a little bit about that last time, um, but no changes were made there. I think there was some discussion about some concern related to traffic speeds. But we didn't have enough agreement to make any change to the text. So if any of you would like to impose stricter regulations in those districts, um, that's something that you can discuss. The definitions have been modified slightly and we have added a definition for permanent signs. In addition, the packet includes several definitions from other communities and from model ordinances. So um, if you're satisfied with the language that has been provided in the proposed text, then that's great. If any of those sample definitions appeal more to you, then that's definitely something that can be included um, in the discussion tonight as well. Um, and then lastly, we talked a little bit about temporal limits um, for non-permanent signs. So there was no change made in the text to place any additional limits um, time-wise on the length of time that a non-permanent sign can be placed on a lot. We had this in the non-residential districts. We did not have it in the residential districts. Those temporal limits have been removed entirely. If this is something that you all want to have included, we can go down that route. The recommendation there would be to consider permanent signs at that point because once we limit the number or the amount of time that residential properties can have non-permanent signs, we've gotta provide for that speech in another way. So I know that's a lot to think about. Um, so for this evening, I'm really just asking for you to review the text that's in the packet. If you like what you see, great. We can prep it for a public hearing. If there are additional changes that you would like to make, we can take notes on those changes and bring those back to you next time.
Okay, thank you. Venus, any changes you wanna make?
Well, I'm looking at the uh, the temporal uh, piece in terms of addressing especially short-term rentals and having it as a business and then having that sign there through the whole uh, summer, fall and winter. So I'm thinking of how can we, we're having a hard time talking about what's non-permanent as far as the structure goes. Is there something that we can do regarding the timeline that they can be up in the yards? I heard that conversation today with, with one of the men out.
Okay, let's, let's ask the attorney.
As the staff report indicates, temporal limitations are something we can explore. The difficulty becomes when you're trying to make content-based decisions and impose a temporal limitation. So as Nate described, I believe at the prior meeting, when you're regulating commercial speech, you're subject to intermediate scrutiny, which is a lower level of scrutiny by the court. But that's content-neutral commercial speech. So when we start making content-based distinctions, even under the umbrella of commercial speech, we bounce ourselves back up to strict scrutiny. So it becomes difficult to make those distinctions, for example, to say STR signs are subject to a temporal limitation. However, a for-sale sign for a property is not. You're best served by thinking of this in terms of commercial signs having a temporal limitation imposed on them as, as a category, as opposed to trying to make those content-based distinctions within the category of commercial signs.
So commercial signs within a residential area, that's what you're talking about when you're?
Correct. If, if you wanted to explore temporal
Yeah.
requirements, but again, as Kelly stated in the staff report indicates, we still have to ensure that there's alternative channels for the expression that was being, that those signs are being used for. That may look like, for example, if we're going to impose temporal limitations, that may have impacts in the terms of how many permanent signs we need to allow for in that district. And it becomes as, depending on how you want it, there's lots of ways to do it, but you get into the issues of, are we just saying any temporal? Like it, it becomes difficult. For example, I've seen some communities will try to say, well, you can only have a, a non-permanent sign out for seven days. Okay, well, they take it in at night and they put it back out and they say it's, I reset my clock. And then you get into the issue of, well, it has to be, that sign has to be put away for this amount of time and now we're, it's content-based because we're looking at that sign. It, it opens up a can of worms. I'm not saying there's not a way to try to thread that needle and we can definitely as a staff, discuss and try to come back with some recommendations, but it is ratcheting it up to another level of complication.
I, I heard today, and I've heard many times before, the frustration of having those signs year, year-round and um, in residential neighborhoods. And so I was just trying to look for a way to relieve some of that um, the signage.
And we can absolutely, like I said, explore some possi-, you know, some proposed language, some courses of action and present those to the planning commission at another meeting for your, for your deliberation. We can absolutely do that.
Well, and, and I look at the, the for-sale signs, I just.
Was there anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Sorry about that. And, and I see with the for-sale signs, I've seen houses sell in a couple of days and the houses sell, take years. And, and you know, to say, okay, the short-term rental can't be there, but you know, the for-sale sign could take years. And the house across the street from me has had people every other weekend still stay there. So to say the season is always from Memorial Day to Labor Day, their, their season is still, is still going. Is there a way then, uh, to potentially take, cause I do wanna be very neutral. And, and this is why, this is a, I think what we have today works. Now that we're moving into a new short-term rental, could we, could they potentially say that if you have a business short-term rental and if you want a sign, it needs to be permanent and we have a law for permanent signs?
I think at that point, you're, you're taking a content-based requirement and requiring it to be permanent.
That is still content. So that's what I'm trying to get. I'm trying to get away from content, saying, well, if this is what you're doing, then this is how you present that. But if that's still considered content, I wanna stay away from it. Okay, thank you.
I was just gonna say the same thing, Clark. Like before COVID, this was a different discussion because we just didn't have the all-year-round um, short-term rentals that we have now. And my house was up there on the screen tonight as part of the Victoria Resort. And it's, um, I have many with, with temporary signs. They do come out. But there are people there year-round now, so I think we need to consider, you know, that, that temporal limits on time kind of goes out the window um, for some of those short-term rentals.
And one thing to consider too is, yes, there are lots of current STRs outside of the proposed STR overlay. Over time, there is. Over time, there is the question of whether that many STRs are gonna stay outside the overlay as lawful, non-conforming uses. So, as a practical matter, through attrition, we may get to a point where possibly, over the next couple of years, you've got a lot of the STRs in the residential areas, they tend to, they end up going away. And all our STRs now are focused in the district, in the overlay district.
Anybody else?
I'll just offer my opinion, that's very, very unlikely. Just my opinion.
Oh, yeah, I mean-
Those are not going away.
Can't have your home of the Grubers welcome sign. What about a permanent anchor? Let's say you have the concrete in the ground, but you have the post where they have a hole in them, where you can attach a bolt in the sign and then remove it above ground, but still keep the anchor. Do we have anything in there that prohibits that?
It's got a structure, it's, the structure is permanently anchored.
Mm-hmm.
I would consider that.
But, yeah, you can pull the sign off, the anchor.
The sign's capable of being easily moved from place to place?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know.
You know, and-
A lot of fences are done that way.
Right. I think it's health, I know we've, we're using the term permanent and non-permanent, but the way the definition has really been modified is we're thinking of these as portable and non-portable, in a sense.
Yes.
They can be both, though. Well, for me, I'm for least restrictive because these are a pain in the ass to, to police. And what you're gonna wind up with are a certain few people, and I can probably think of some names right now that'll be calling city staff all the time about the egregious signage that's been put up. All right, so what do you want to do with this? Let's keep going. Who didn't make a motion tonight?
It's non-actionable.
It's not actionable.
It's Eddie's turn. Not that I'm growing up under the bus, but it's Eddie's turn.
What we need to know is if there are any additional changes that you'd like us to explore, or if you'd like to preface, if you'd like staff to prep this.
I'd say no changes, and then you motion to set a public hearing.
Okay.
That'd be my recommendation. But I can't make any motions, so I'm stuck here in the middle.
What was your wording again, Chair?
That you're satisfied with the text, so you, all you're really doing is setting a public hearing.
I make a motion if we, we set this for a public hearing, next meeting?
Next meeting.
Yes.
Perfect.
Right to the point.
Yeah, that's it.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any other discussion? Like, this will be easy, I don't think we need to do roll call. All favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Ball, pose, motion carries. Okay, commission member, staff comments. So, we have a hierarchy tonight. Anything city manager wishes to comment upon?
No, thank you, but thank you for all the work that you do.
Okay. And attorney, anything?
No, thank you for having me.
All right. And since I gave you a chance to talk, you know, and you can plug your firm or something, we get a discount. Kelly?
Just remind everyone that, um, the next meeting is May 8, as we discussed previously, that's the second Thursday of May. That's it from me.
Anything from Samantha? No. Bob?
Comments? I thought a good bit about Eddie's comment from last month, which I always respect Eddie, whatever he says, because he doesn't say all that much. So, when he speaks, I, I pay attention. And, and your comment basically, if I can paraphrase, was you, you were a little bit troubled or would prefer people didn't preface what they said with "I think."
Right. That is correct.
And, and I'm going to take a slight exception, exemption to that and say, when, when I say "I think," it's only after I try hard to listen to what's said here, what's said from the audience, what I've read, what I've researched. And when I say "I think," it's, it's based on all of that. So, I don't want you to think that my comments in that area or in that manner are just off the top of my head. It's after proper consideration, at least what I think is proper consideration. So, I appreciate your comment, but that's my take on it.
And I, I accept your, I accept your response, your reply.
Think about that, you were in his head for 30 days. Venus?
May I give a quick reply? You know, coming, coming from my background, being, you know, procedure and process-driven, there's just no room for that kind of. And I can understand what you said, and you gave a, a good justification for it. I'm in a learning mode. This is new for me. So, I'm sitting here, I'm like a sponge, I'm taking in everything so that I can make a, when it comes to making a vote, I, I have enough knowledge, enough that I can understand, based on what you all say, that I, that I think I can make a good decision when it comes to making a vote. But if, if, if your remarks have been prefaced with "I think" and based on others, other conditions, circumstances, I don't know what I can hang my hat on there, really. I, I just don't. Because right now, I'm relying on getting your information and your integrity when I make a vote. Does that sound okay?
Totally understand.
Until I become my own, until I become my own subject matter expert.
I think we all do to a large degree. We're all in a, in a learning mode, learning from each other, learning from the citizenry, and so on, so.
And I'm at the lower end of the spectrum. Okay.
We're all good.
But I certainly respect, thank you for that feedback.
Anything else you'd like to add?
I don't think so.
Because I can jump around with this small group, okay?
Maybe at the lower end of the spectrum.
Well, Eddie may be at the lower end of the spectrum, but I'm on the spectrum, so I don't have any comments for tonight. How's that?
Clark?
Two things. Speedy recovery to commission member Campbell's spouse. He's not here this evening because of that. And secondly, I don't know if anybody listened to the news yesterday and caught our previous city attorney, Nick Curcio, who actually gave oral arguments before the Supreme Court yesterday. So, you know, that's something that, you know, later in your career, if you work for South Haven, you can make it to the Supreme Court. Just saying, just saying.
Through the help and mentorship of the planning commission, I can only hope.
Michigan Supreme Court or the United States Supreme Court, which?
State, state Supreme Court, state Supreme Court. But it was funny when they said his name, and then I heard him on the radio, and I just laughed, so, you know. So, just kind of a, a what-if. And another good meeting tonight. Thank you.
I want to thank our, our state, city attorney for reviewing the, the signage and looking at other municipalities or cities to bring best practices here. So, at least we could discuss that, given good information. Thank you for that.
And speaking of the state Supreme Court, if you remember when we were doing the road village, I asked about the county road village that we didn't receive any part of. And we looked into it, and we were supposed to be receiving part of it, but we had to take the county all the way to Michigan Supreme Court, and we did win. And I think the same thing was with the library village and something else. The county was shortchanging us for decades, but we got that ironed out. So, it is possible that a city of South Haven attorney gets to go to the Michigan State Supreme Court. All right, without anything else, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I support.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion? Seeing none, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose, motion carries, meeting is adjourned.